For strength and love of liberty And the voice of hope and prayer With Godless faith in our destiny We solemnly declare Side by side we stand Islands of the blue Caribbean sea This ornate land We pledge our lives to thee Where every prayer is On the reward place And may God bless our nation Where every prayer is On the reward place And may God bless our nation
Our heads And ask for God's blessing upon us Almighty and eternal supreme being The light of all lights The creator of the universe We give thanks and sing your praise alone For your guide and protector Supreme being, please continue to bestow upon us Your mercies and compassion That we shall be pleased and be pleased with all in the city of San Fernando That we shall glorify your name to the world Through our examples Almighty being, may your light shine upon this city and our country And keep us away from all forms of darkness And that we shall always acknowledge your greatness For without your presence, nothing will be achieved. Amen.
Mr. CEO, members of administration Ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant morning to you. I am Dexter Martin, Police inspector attached to the San Fernando City Police Department. Please be informed That there are two points of egress to this council chamber. One being the door we all use to enter the council chamber. The other is on my right, which is the fire escape. Should there be any reason for us to Evacuate this council chamber, we shall do so in an orderly fashion By proceeding to any one of the points of egress Preferably the one nearest to you or more convenient to you. You will then exit the building And proceed to the master point which is located at Haris Promenade In the vicinity of the banstand. There and then a head count will be executed To ensure that everyone is accounted for. Thank you.
10th statutory meeting of the 10th San Fernando City Council Held on Wednesday 25th of October 2017 It is now called to order Corrections and Mission Page 1 2, 3 Page 3 4 5, oh there's one on page 5 I think it's 12.4 Mr. Headley as opposed to Mr. Healy 12.4.1 Under page 6, sorry. Page 7 Can I once move for the confirmation?
Your worship, Mr. CEO, Members of council, members of administration, I move For the confirmation of the minutes of the 10th statutory meeting Of the 10th San Fernando City Council held on Wednesday 25th of October 2017.
Can I have a second please?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration Liza Foyce-Sapeiro rises to second.
All in favor? Any against? Any abstention? Which are discarded? Matters arising? Page 2 3 4 5 6
Worship With respect to item number 12.4 Redisappointment with the municipal police department. I am here and I'm pleased to inform you That It may seem as though After this comment was made That there has been some improvement In the municipal police department. However On a yearly basis During the Christmas inter-carnival season My department, we sit, we We brainstorm Despite the fact that we are understaffed But we try our best At least have a presence Of police officers On the streets of San Fernando, including High Street and Mukrapo Street. Now, yes, we are faced with some challenges apart from the manpower We have officers, we haven't, the San Fernando Municipal Police Department hasn't had a recruitment for a number of years. The officers that we have onboard are officers, some of them are aging Some of them are ill And we try our best We try our utmost best to at least meet our goals. Now You all would probably have noticed that during the activities for the city celebrations Our officers made a commitment And we came out, we performed our duties at every event that required police officers. We even had officers who worked The civic reception in their Y tunics And they came out in the morning for the interfaith service In Y tunics as well. And They have, some of them even came out on their off-duty, we had officers who came out from their vacation leave To assist with the city celebrations. During this period, Christmas period What our department did Is restructure our roster To ensure that during the daylight period We have sufficient officers so we can make patrols on the street And have that continuous. In doing so, we Have, well, we had to make a little sacrifice And that sacrifice is shortening the night shift. Now, when we do that, we are unable to do Institution patrols and so on That we normally do during the night period. However, I will advise that Seeing that we would not be making these night patrols The councillors or the men as the case may be We would not be visiting your homes, however, if there's an emergency We will treat with it accordingly. If it is, we have to saw the assistance of the TTPS. Now
Inspector, may I just ask that That certain aspects of your contribution be deleted From your, from your What you're saying there, because you're putting the If I may say, the enemies, you're providing information That they'll have nobody at my house Or nobody patrolling the council, so I think you may want to retract that, that aspect of your contribution, but you may continue.
Thank you, your worship, keen sense of observation.
Yes.
So, so my department is treated with Well, not be, as I said, not because of item number 12.4
So, so before you continue, your officers will continue to patrol and Provide protection to the all members of council.
Yes, of course, of course.
Just wanted to make sure, clear that. Thank you. Okay, and I'm happy that the resolve is that There is consideration and reflection And how we move forward, and we on this side are fully aware Of your situation, things of your shortage of manpower. And when we speak about the will, it's the, sometimes you have to find creative ways to come out of a difficult situation. For instance, you are going to the Marabella market To pick up the days collection as the case may be of observation. On your way to the market, you can pass High Street And just let the vendors know, the illegal vendors know that you are wrong, as opposed to just going directly to the market. Likewise, the central market, and those things can be done To advance, to accelerate, you know, your presence and that sort of thing, and that's where we found that there was a A lack of energy and understanding and cooperation. However, I must acknowledge that during the city celebration events That we had a strong presence of your officers, as you said before, in Tunic and uniformed and Creating that sense of awareness and we are fully appreciated, and I want you to Convey to your officers that the sentiments expressed here this morning. And we look forward to your 110% input for the carnival, Christmas inter-carnival period, and we Just as well, I ask the secretary to pen a letter Boot to your head and to TTPS And other stakeholders for us to start discussing the way forward With traffic to, from, from Christmas in the carnival, so you expect that correspondence coming forward, coming forward and for us to meet on. Thank you for your input and for your For righteousness in this morning's presentation. Illegal structure, I know that the acting engineer Sitting in the hot seat this morning, but we have been talking about illegal structure for a while now, and there's a correspondence From the minister asking us to Advance this matter, so could we get some update on where we are with these matters?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration I saw the correspondence and I forwarded it to the BI too to get an update on it. I've had no update, that was only done
Recently?
Yeah, Friday last week, I believe.
Because, and you could say, but what, I was at the library corner this morning, observing, making some observation And we had, with the enforcement of the traffic plan We had removed vendors from certain key areas But once you relax, they go back to their comfort zone And that is happening again, and we expect What will happen within the next couple of weeks, so we're going into January, February So I know if we could accelerate our, our approach With the mechanisms and whatever systems and solution you have to the problem In collaboration with public health and the municipal police to address some of those issues. The overhanging rafters and, and extensions on Mukrapo Street Continues, and I don't know how we're going to deal with it, this was a recent matter this morning. And we have two critical areas, which is Mukrapo Street Almost on Lord Street corner or down to Keith Street The stores on the left and the right that use the entire pavement Allowing pedestrians to walk on the street, as street as well as High Street. So if we could have that addressed and let us more or less, as I said before, accelerate our, whatever plans we have To make, make it at least more, more shopping friendly for people and for business persons and pedestrians. And at the same time, let's make the point that we intend to make High Street a pedestrian mall On Sunday the 17th of December Between Penitent Street and Short Street. We are speaking to the stakeholders there, that we already have the support of the police on this. We intend to put tents on the centre of High Street, allowing the vendors to go there And of course, the, I could use this opportunity to raise the matter with the vendors. We met with the vendors this week and we're trying to arrange a compromise as much as it is illegal. We don't want the vendors on the pavement And I will ask the COPSSEC to give us an update on the discussion we had with them this week. COPSSEC?
Good morning, everyone. Your worship, administration Subsequent thing It was indicated that they have agreed to Conduct that pedestrian mall for one day And this morning actually We have also, we are encouraging On a one-month testing An agreement with them by which they would be allowed to Conduct like a Christmas vending thing between the In the month of December. The only thing is a couple of teething problems that we are trying to iron out But we are presently registering them for that one-month Vending project. Subsequent to that, we will have We will do it on a trial basis But we have to meet with them again.
And let me just add a little more to it, the, in terms of the interest of the business persons who are taxpayers and also providing employment. The vendors will not be allowed to use the pavement. They are using the drain On the, on the left side of High Street going west to east One side only And they're not to use the pavement or block the entrance of any business places, and they've agreed to that And they're getting four days out of the seven days. And this is the agreement we made, and of course I'd like the police to be involved in this matter And have all those details And how the operation function, of course, we're going to apply the law And once they do not adhere to the rules and the regulations and the guidelines That we drawn up, as a contract has been made with them And a fee will be paid to the corporation for their existence and their presence. With this, this agreement goes into play, I think from Monday
Yeah, it was on the 4th of December.
4th of December, for one month.
Yeah, we have increased the fee, which they have also agreed to.
Thank you very much, COPSSEC. And members, if you want to comment, now is the time to do so, what your thoughts or views are on it, if you feel free to do so. On this particular matter. If not, we continue. We have the, I know that I will speak about this in our, in the, in my Report for the month At the end of this meeting, but 12.8, we speak about the partnership with Jamar Rolando McNorton AKA Chronics And I will see my part in this, but if members want to comment, this is the time to do so. Councillor Paris? Councillor Paris and Councillor Joseph for the person's Councillor Paris actually was approached by the promoter about how to go about this Before this brought the council for approval. Councillor Paris and Councillor Joseph for the person didn't go to infrastructure in Skinner Park and listen with them. So I don't, I don't, or one of will like to, to talk.
Your worship, members of council, members of administration, Mr. CEO I must say that it was really a pleasure to see This type of life brought back to the city of San Fernando. And thus far, all of the comments that Have, all the feedback that has come back to this council has been positive. In terms of the hotels, all were booked. A lot of the taxis, they did more than one trip on that day, I'm certain. The cross where we have our vending, our designated vending area, made a visit Everything was sold out, so there was a bit of commerce in the city of San Fernando. It was really a pleasure Working on this type of international production. And I must say, in my personal capacity, I, I know I'm getting up there now, but in my recent recollection Within the past decade, I must say that that perhaps was the biggest concert That Skinner Park has ever seen. And, and incident-free, I must say, incident-free, and the police did compliment us when we were leaving the venue. So I will not take away anything from what his worship has to say with regard to that, but it was certainly a pleasure. And we hope to do something like that again in the not-too-distant future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Shaun should, should share some of the glory as well, so I'll ask the CEO to share his views and his thoughts.
A good morning, all your worship, members of council, members of admin around the table. Well, there's not much to add in terms of what Councillor Paris has said and what the mayor is, what we're expecting the mayor to see. However, I think it was a very good opportunity for Skinner Park to be tested. Tested in this capacity, I mean I was there, I was here until late, and when you look at the crowds compared to the events that we would have had before It was enormous. And it was a good opportunity again to test our infrastructure. The city engineer, acting Mr. Dennis Albert And myself, we were there, down there before, and even after the event Certain conditions were applied To, to the use of Skinner Park. Those conditions would adhere too. And the entire event was contained in an area Even though requests were made for, you know, other areas of the park It, it was just contained in that area, and I think the, we as the, as the administration Including the engineers as well as the police, public health The layout of the food courts, I mean, there's so much you could say, the layout was so Adaptable to the event and was so accessible. Your worship, I think, I would say enough, because as you are aware
Yeah, you're getting excited.
Yes, I'm very excited about what took place down there and being a part of it, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. We all, we have all reason to be, to feel excited about this because it's about San Fernando And putting San Fernando first. So maybe we can continue on page, we move to page 7. The matter's arising, could we move to announcements, please?
Your worship, members of council So in the same vein as what we were just speaking about, I'll start off by saying Do it for the love, may not do it for the like. Obviously, we know that is Chronics. In my opinion That epitomizes the mantra of a good local government representative And our fraternity mourns the loss of our brother And fellow servant to the citizens of the electoral district of Belmont East. Councillor Daryl Rajpole, fondly called Raj And Doc, and also Stopy By our colleagues in the Porta Spain City Corporation. He, like myself, came into public life via the intrepid PNM Local Government Class of 2010. He was the chairman of Sports and Youth Affairs and also Physical Infrastructure. He was a fan of football and used it as a tool Tearing down invisible borderlines By uniting communities with the Porta Spain City Corporation Small Goals Champions League. Councillor Rajpole was also known as an avid fan of our national instrument And like many of us, his nickname, like many of us and his nickname sake Dr. Eric Williams favoured desperados And would follow them keenly during the carnival season. If it was a prerequisite For a successful councillor Meant being hardworking, dedicated, grassroots and grounded in your community Daryl Rajpole would pass with flying colours with no extra credit needed. We honour you And the example you have left us all, and we continue to offer our sincere condolences to his family. I thank you.
And before we stand to a minute's silence, I would like to say that it was at the mayor's ball when, when he, when he passed And during the ball, the deputy mayor came to me and said, "Your worship, we have to leave, we just had an emergency. One of our colleagues just, just passed." And I, I mean, just the middle of another event, and it was extremely sad and unfortunate. And I knew him to be a pan player, a tenner-based player, desperado, so we have that kind of a nexus. But even the deputy mayor himself had to be hospitalized that same evening Because of the depressing state that he was in when he got back to Porta Spain with his bad condition, so maybe stand for a minute's silence, please. And the soul of faith to the departed rest in peace and rise in the glory of heaven. Amen.
Committee reports acceptance Finance planning and allocation of resources.
Your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration I rise and ask for the acceptance of the finance planning and allocation of resources meetings held on the 3rd of October 10th of October And the 25th of October 2017.
May I have a second please?
I beg to second, your worship Mr. CEO, members of council, members of admin, I beg to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Public health?
Good morning, your worship, Mr. CEO Members of council, members of administration, ladies and gentlemen, I, Alderman Yoness-DuRien, rise for the acceptance of Public Health Committee Report of Meetings Held on the 3rd of October 2017.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO Members of administration Marabella South Vista Bella, beg to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Physical infrastructure and transport?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, good morning. I, Patricia Victor Wilson, representing Monri Poonavet Rise to ask for acceptance of the Physical Infrastructure and Transport Committee Report of Meeting Held On the 10th of October 2017.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Liza Foyce-Sapeiro rises to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Personal?
Good afternoon, his worship, members of council Mr. CEO, members of administration, I, Alderman Thomas, rise for the acceptance Of the Personal Committee Report held on the 10th of October 2017.
Can I have a second please?
Good morning, your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, I, Alderman Yoness-DuSecond.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Committee reports for adoption. General purposes?
Your worship, Mr. CEO Members of council, members of admin I rise for the adoption of the General Purposes Committee Report Meeting Held on the 10th of October 2017.
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, Liza Foyce-Sapeiro rises to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Parks and institutions?
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration Marabella South Vista Bella, rise for the adoption of the Parks And Institution Committee Report Meeting Held on the 10th of October 2017.
May I get a second please? May I get a second please?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration Koke Turba, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Arts and culture?
Good afternoon Your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, Springville Paradise, rise For the adoption of the Arts and Culture Committee Meeting Held on the 3rd of October 2017.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, Koke Turba, rise to second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstention, emotion is carried? Public health, public claims and liabilities?
Good afternoon, your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, members of public I, Alderman Shane Samlal, rise for the adoption for the Committee Report of Public Claims and Liabilities Or meeting held on the 3rd of October 2017.
Second please.
Good evening, your worship Good afternoon, your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, I, Alderman Yoness-DuRien, second.
All in favor? Any against, any abstentions, emotion is carried? Security and Disaster Management Committee? Good into reason.
Your worship, members of council, administration, I ask for the adoption of the minutes.
Can I get a second, please?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration, lazy for East Supero, rises to second.
All in favour? Any against, any abstention, emotionless carried, tourism and heritage?
Your worship, members of council, CEO, members of administration. I rise for the adoption of the Tourism and Heritage Committee Report for meeting held on the 3rd of October, 2017.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of administration, I beg to second.
All in favour?
Aye.
Any against, any abstention, emotionless carried?
Your worship, members of council, members of administration. Springville Paradise asks for the adoption of the Assessment Committee Meeting held on the 3rd of October, 2017.
Can I get a second, please?
Your worship, Mr. CEO, members of council, members of administration, I beg to second.
All in favour?
Aye.
Any against, any abstention, emotionless carried, sports and social services?
Pleasant day to your worship, we always save the best for last. It's a privilege for the councillor of Marabella East, Arnold Ryan Sugram, to rise for the adoption of the Sports and Social Services Committee Report of Meeting held on the 3rd of October, 2017. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, finding Ryan. Second, please.
Your worship, members of council, Mr. CEO, members of admin, I beg to second.
All in favour?
Aye.
Any against, any abstention, emotionless carried? Mr. CEO, are there any petitions?
Your worship, members of council, members of admin, no petition today, your worship.
Any motions?
No motion today, your worship.
Any personal explanations?
None from admin, your worship.
Any questions?
No questions from admin, your worship.
Any other urgent matters?
No urgent matter today, your worship.
Members, it's my responsibility, as known, the last month activities. And this November marked the 29th anniversary of our status as a city. As is customary, we mark this occasion with a litany of events, a mark to highlight this achievement. We began our celebration with an opening prayer service. And I would like to thank the clergy and congregation of the Sisumachar Presbyterian Church for allowing us the opportunity to start this month's proceedings in prayer. As one of San Fernando's oldest houses of worship, it is with great respect and thanks that we were able to coordinate with the clergy for this important service. Another celebration was our Senior Citizens Day. Another part of our celebration was the recognition of our senior citizens. One of the greatest resource of our society is that of the wisdom and life experience of the elderly. Much more time and dedication is needed from us all so that we can show our appreciation for some of our nation's greatest national treasures. In providing a day for our senior citizens, we were able to cater to their individual needs and learn from their experiences. Commendation must go out to former councillor Gibbs, which augmented the efficiency of the committee responsible for this event. The civic award ceremony highlighted and recognized the invaluable social, business and cultural inputs of several outstanding San Fernandians. Whilst many of the wardies have been in the spotlight, some of them were quietly in the background to ensure that their contributions benefit our community. The actions of these selfless citizens act as a powerful binding agent towards the fabric of our society. We found it necessary that we recognize their contributions, not only for posterity, but also to act as a beacon and example for others to follow. Stretching across age, gender, cultural and socio-economic gaps, it was our pleasure and privilege to honor those San Fernandians at this year's function. A longstanding initiative of the Public Health Department, the distinguished lecture series has again cemented the position as a hallmark in our city's celebration. This year's theme was "Their Name Is Tomorrow", a central theme focused around necessity for ensuring that the youth remain one of our society's primary priority. The congruence of this theme and the sentiment which we as an organization have echoed throughout this year symbolized the necessity for additional focus to be placed on youth and youth affairs. I am certain that the Public Health Department will continue to use this initiative as an incredible teaching tool for all San Fernandians. We also embraced the American Embassy on a business symposium. This initiative proved to be an excellent opportunity to strengthen our relationship with the US Embassy as it provided an avenue for interested entrepreneurs and business owners to get a better grasp of conducting business with entities in the United States. The method and requirements to obtain businesses or business-oriented documentation and a better idea of what the US Embassy can provide outside the issuing of visas. It was well-attended and informative. It is our intention to grow this event into another one of the major initiatives that will be a permanent part of our city celebrations to come. And may I say, where we embrace and involve other embassies. This year's mayor's charity ball was a resounding success. The city auditorium was transformed into an elegant setting that was most fitting to this event, much to the delight of the patrons, including Ms. Judy Bowler. Proceeds from this ticket sales will go towards various charitable organizations and end users in San Fernando who seek the interests of the less fortunate and those who fall through the social safety net. The success of this event signals that the inherent good nature of San Fernandians still is ever-present and is yet another major pillar in the foundation and identity of our citizens. The event that touched me most was our art exhibition and spoken word. And as we strive to integrate a more cultural experience into our city, we provided two platforms for the expression of the art in society in the form of an art exhibition and a spoken word event. The art exhibit featured the work of many young and extremely talented artists in San Fernando. This work entailed amazing paintings of everyday scenes in San Fernando and showcased the hidden gems of talent in our city. The spoken word concert highlighted the innate talent of our youths to identify the social issues of the day. Their rhythmic style underscores the ability of our youth to carry on our rich tradition of calypso and caiso in its root form. The talent displayed assured me of such, and I look forward to seeing the future of one of our national art form evolve. And thanks to their dedication, and those of you who follow social media can follow some of the work that we had on Harish Palma on that evening. And I want to commend those who involved, including Councillor Joseph. I had some doubt about the event, but we came out of council meeting that evening. And Councillor, remember, we saw a small amount of patrons and other persons, but the event turned out to be such a success that is now getting quite a thousand views on our ongoing process on social media. We also embarked on a project with the Presentation College on the San Fernando Triathlon. The San Fernando Triathlon now is in its second year. This collaboration between the San Fernando City Corporation and organizers at Presentation College has the potential to be a premier sporting event for our celebration. This event has already doubled in size and shows all indicators of increasing from 200 participants to 500 at next year's event. Calling on athletes of all ages and competencies, this triathlon proved that San Fernando has the geography and potential to become a major sporting hub for both land and water based sports. And we come to the marquee event of the celebration, which is the Chronics Concert and Eat and Drink and Jazz. Friday's collaboration between the San Fernando City Corporation and the promoters of the Chronics One Heart Concert was an amazing success. Congratulations to One Heart promoters for your professionalism and forthrightness in the execution of this event. This event showcased our city as one that has the potential to support a thriving entertainment-based economy. The mayor hosted the Minister of Tourism, Donald Bishamfakojo and her party, as well as other well-known local personalities, Keishon Walcott, Alison Hines, Anya Ayongchi, to name a few. Most importantly, and outside of the incredible entertainment value that this concert brought to the thousands of patrons who attended, was the myriad of entrepreneurial opportunities for the citizens of San Fernando across many economic sectors, from small vendors, transport services, restaurants, bars and the many filled hotels across San Fernando. This concert proved and worked in providing a source of economic opportunities for small and large business owners. The senior superintendent of the TTPS responded to my inquiries at the end of the event as follows. Incident-free, no reports were made, no vehicles were tampered with, and no one was arrested. This is an event that had over 15,000 patrons over a seven-hour duration. Well done, San Fernandians, you have proven yourselves. You did not let us down. So I can say this morning without fear or favour that San Fernando is a model city that others should strive to emulate. This event also serves as a clarion call to future collaborations with the entertainment industry to further expand and grow a sustainable service industry here in San Fernando and begin to drive the establishment Skinner Park as a major entertainment center. Coupled on the heels of this event was Eat, Drink and Jazz, which also highlighted the unique use of San Fernando Hill as a potential venue for more intimate events. While smaller in size, this event carried with it the potential to mirror and compete with other similar events held throughout the Caribbean that focus on this genre of music. Ultimately, this year's celebration brought with it a revitalization of the city of San Fernando and gives a glimpse of the potential our city has for growth in this vibrant new economy. At this point, I would like to thank Ms. Corinne, Ms. Bowler and the auditorium staff for their dedication during this hectic period. Is she here? As well? As well as the CEO and the administrative arm of the council, who at times went beyond the call of duty to ensure our events were successful. In conclusion, I would like to thank both the Toronto, Tobago Police Service and the municipal police for their outstanding contribution. However, they were not required to act as the behavior of our citizens was a testimony to their discipline and their pleasant demeanor. That is indicative of our national acclaimed personality. Additionally, the citizens of San Fernando must also be commended for their participation in these events. We all have a part to play in the future of San Fernando, and it is our responsibility to ensure that the future economy of our city rests upon a firm foundation built on our dedication towards excellence and sustainability. We can and will see this future together as proud San Fernandians and citizens of Trinidad and Tobago. I thank you.